Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderwoman Husa. Alderwoman Duco.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Weigand.
Here.
Alderman Wingington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
Alderman Husa is excused. Roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hark.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Phil Clay. Fire Chief Tom Corr. Finance Director J.B. Maitre.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole. Director of Waste Water Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Director of Residential and Commercial Development Services Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here.
Director of I.T. Scott Markovich.
Here.
Chief Clay and Chief Corr are excused. They both have their deputies, and Jason Poole's excused also today, and John Hartman's here on his behalf. Ladies and gentlemen, if you are able at this time, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We have no public hearings this evening. I would open public participation. When someone would like to speak, please raise your hand. I'll call on you. Step up to the microphone and give your name, and try to keep your comments two to three minutes, and something pertaining to Belleville, you know, what's going on, hopefully the agenda or if not in Belleville. Ma'am, you raised your hand first, right here. Go ahead, please. Come up, yes.
I'd like to say good evening, Mayor. I had one question. Do you have attributes in place for the continued growth and success for the city of Belleville for the year 2020? Do you have attributes? I mean, what is your, I guess, care of events? I mean, what would your cabinet contribute to the success of Belleville?
Okay, your question is, what are our plans?
Well, I'm talking about for the year that's coming up.
Okay, we do-
Do you still have the esophageal cancer month? Is that for every year? Esophageal cancer?
Esophageal cancer?
Yeah.
Well, when we get asked about doing proclamations, we will do them. We will certainly consider them, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
I don't think I've been asked that one this year yet, but when they come into my office, we, you know, anything that's reasonable, that's a valid project proposal like that, we will bring the proclamation forward.
All right.
Okay?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
I'd just like to say you're doing a great job for this year of Belleville as mayor. God bless you enough. Good evening.
Ma'am, can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm a registered voter and want to. Hi, Harmon.
All right. Who else? Yes, sir, right in the front row there.
Good evening. My name is John Hoffman. I live at 1906 Hawksville Drive in the Turtle Creek subdivision in Ward Four. I'm also the president of the Turtle Creek Homeowners Association. And one of the things that has come to our attention is a proposal for a development that will border our subdivision, a proposal to put, it sounds like 16 buildings, apartment buildings, in an area that be adjacent to us, between us and the Memorial Train Stop, in that area there. We will share a thousand-foot border with this property, so obviously we will have some concerns. So I think one of the biggest concerns I've heard from our neighborhood is around traffic congestion, given the volume that they're lucky at in turn of units there. It sounds to be something where between 300 and 500 people in that building with 64 units, most of them being three-bedroom units and a couple of two-bedroom ones. So if you do the math there, that could be anywhere from about 300 to 500 people. If you take our subdivision and the one across the street, Carrington Place, which would directly border this, there's a total of 300 people there. So this would effectively double the number of people over what is essentially an 800-foot stretch of Frank Scott Parkway, which in that area is only a two-lane thing road. So traffic congestion would be a concern to us. Accidents, there's been a number there already, so just from a traffic safety standpoint, and then the ability to get emergency response vehicles in the area would be concerned. The other thing I've noticed, Frank Scott Parkway is the only access to both Carrington, to us, and it would be the only access for this proposed development also. So that would make it quite difficult with nothing else going on there. We also have concerns about, just in terms of drainage of the area. There's a creek that runs behind our property there, and we're not sure what the water plan or the water control situation would be for this proposal. So I think part of our question is also, you know, what will be the process to take this through? We just become aware of it last week. We understand that it's going up towards, to the zoning board in January, January 23rd.
Right.
And so as an association, we'd like to be communicated with and aware of the progress of this and be able to comment on it. So just some feedback in terms of what the process for this proposal.
What I would suggest is that before you leave tonight, that you see that young lady back there raising her hand, Anissa McCaskill, and she can walk you through the process, okay? She just told me of the fact that they turned their application in between Christmas and New Year's. It is on schedule for zoning. We have, they certainly requested that. That's where you need to have this contingent of folks who are concerned to show up and listen and to give comment when asked. So that's the important step to voice your opinion, would be at the zoning hearing first. But there are other steps after that. It will come back to this body, but we won't see it until probably the first meeting of February at the earliest. So, and like I said, so there's a procedure. Anissa will be glad to walk you through there, and as we get information, it'll either be online, or we'll be glad to share it with you as we can.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your concern. And like I said, I would certainly encourage, if all the people over here, which I recognize some of you, I know that's where you live, a few of you, a few faces, I would certainly recommend being here at 7:00 PM in this room on the 23rd of January, because that's where the focus on that project will be brought forward, and that'll be your chance for all of you who would desire to speak.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you for your concern, okay? Yes, ma'am?
Patty Gray, I'm a resident of Belleville. And I just want to confirm that Art on the Square is staying in downtown Belleville and not moving to O'Fallon. So, it's a rumor that's been going around, and I've been asked by several downtown merchants and also aldermen, so I just wanted to clarify that. And I also wanted to let the city know, before you vote tonight, about all the media that you were on. Here's 65 pages of, and I have a listing of Aubrey Magazine, how many people saw you, how many impressions the city received, all the billboards, all the MetroLink panels, and I think you'd be very interested in seeing this. And we get reports from, like, Media Watch, from the television stations, from the newspapers, from the magazines, of what the impressions are. So I'd like you to know that our print readership last year, impressions of Belleville, 958,741. TV commercials, 1,800,000. Now, these are impressions from people seeing it. Media Watch impressions, which is all the TV radio, is 59,479,708. Billboard impressions, 4,31,152. And MetroLink panels, 503,268, for a total media impression of 66,842,869 impressions. Then if you add in the InKind radio and TV commercials, to a total of 238,000 in InKind contributions to those, and also the InKind newspaper, and plus what Art on the Square has spent, and plus the InKind, the total publicity value for the city of Belleville and for Art on the Square was 506,669. So I thought that might be something you might be interested in. And also, according to our economic report for the impact of Art on the Square, it was over 2.3 million last year. And I can provide you that information if you're interested.
Patty, if you could get that to, like, Jennifer, we'll send it out by email to all the aldermen, and we'll share it with all of them, okay? Because I think they should have that. I think it's great information. It's extremely important, okay?
It's a shame that more people could not come to our wrap-up with our sponsors, but our theme this year is going to be "Se Lavee." So it's going to be like French with mimes and street performers and everything. So I think it's going to be great.
Okay, well, we thank you. And this is tonight's on the agenda for the street closure and getting the date locked in, the dates, okay? All right, anyone else this evening? In the back of the room? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, I'm Helen Johnson. I was here about a month ago requesting the city of Belleville to ban plastic bags. And I'm back to see if there's been any movement in the aldermen about that.
We've had some staff discussions, ma'am, that came right before the holidays when you were here last.
Yes.
And it's not a dead topic, but I will tell you that we will send it, the, a couple of the committees will be meeting later on this month, and we're going to recommend that it gets discussed. And probably Health and Housing, wouldn't it be the proper, could be the place? I don't know. It could be Streets and Grades, the next meeting as well, because they deal with so much of the litter on the street. But we are, and our Keep Belleville Beautiful campaign is gearing up for this year, this spring. So we are, we haven't discarded it, but that came right before the holidays, and we are going to have, did we get your name and everything last night?
Yes, it's Helen Johnson.
Okay, well, very good. Well, we're going to, we're going to have discussion as this new year starts.
Okay, because since I was here last time, New York State, as of March 1, is going to ban. Multiple cities in New Jersey have banned. Oregon banned in January 1, and Mexico City in Mexico banned also. So there's been a lot of movement, and I didn't know whether to start petitions or just wait.
Well, we certainly can't tell you what to do or not to do, but I do think that we heard you, and we had some minimal discussion right before the holidays. And I think it'll pick up again, because it's a serious topic, and I think some cities are doing it. And we're going to continue to have some more information to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I realize. It was the holidays, and it was bad timing.
Yeah, but that's okay. Never a bad time to get started, though. That's okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name is Nora Pride. I'm with John's elderly partners here. I live in Turtle Creek. I want to say two things. First of all, I don't think you should build an apartment complex. I already heard what you said, Mayor, I guess. I think we need to seriously look at extending bus service from one end of Frank Scott to the other. You've got an anchor shopping center at one end, you've got an anchor shopping center, which I realize is in Shiloh, I think, out the other end. And there's a lot of kids that need to get around to jobs. These places are fountains for jobs. And we need to run a bus from one end to Frank Scott to the other, and we need to bring the MetroLink train from French Village to Belleville. Now, I understand that's a logistical issue. They stop one train at French Village, and if you get on the wrong train, you have to get on the other train. Now, I'm not complaining. I'm not whining. But my wife uses MetroLink all the time. She uses the bike trail from our house, the MetroLink station, all the way out to Swick. And it's a great thing for us, and I think it needs to be extended up to Belleville. There's nothing in French Village. This is the anchor for this end of the MetroLink. Why stop down there? Because there's open ground, I understand. But they could do better and move it up here. And finally, I think we need to get rid of plastic bags. It's not that hard. It's not that big a deal. It's a waste of oil. Thank you, Mayor. The last time we met, I was your bus driver on the City-
That's why you look familiar.
Sister City program. We went to your house.
The mayor of Germany, remember? He got off-
Yes, he did. He was a little bossy, a little bossy, but he liked my mustache, and we went, and I told you then I would move from Collinsville to Belleville, so I'm here.
Okay, well, that's good. See, we-
Would not.
Anyone else this evening? It'll be hard to top that one. Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close public participation. Thank you for all the comments. We will now go into presentations, recognitions, and appointments. At this time tonight, as we do every month of first meeting, we recognize the character word of the month, and a lot of times we're blessed to have some of the young people here from the Basic Initiative, but I think a lot of schools are just getting back the next day or two. Tonight's word for the month of January is integrity. Doing what is right even when it's difficult. And that's something that we need to all be paying attention to, because that's, those are good words. The next thing on tonight's agenda is a presentation, and I ask that the Belleville Running Club, please come forward and present a presentation to the city. So make yourself, and then staff, whoever's, I'm not sure, Jason's not here tonight, but Johnny? You can come on up.
You guys can come in if you want to-
Yeah, you can come on up.
If you want to do it up front here, however you want to.
Yeah, come on up here. You can even talk into her microphone if you want. You're pretty loud, we trust.
My name is Tara West, and on behalf of the Belleville Running Club, we are here to present the city with a plaque recognizing Belleville, Illinois as a runner-friendly community. This is a pretty big deal, because there's only about 50 other communities in the United States that have been awarded this title from the Road Runners Club of America. Thanks to the outstanding support from Belleville, including the mayor's office, Belleville Parks and Recreation Department, Police Department, and Street Department, we have miles and miles of safe paved and empty trails and sidewalks in the city to run on, and we are so grateful for that. We also want to acknowledge the races in the city for sponsoring local races, because without that support, they wouldn't happen, and the hundreds and hundreds of residents that come out every year to participate in and volunteer at area races. We are just thankful to be part of a community that promotes a healthy lifestyle, and we hope that you will display and show off this wonderful reputation. Thank you very much.
This is great, this is great. And we, the Belleville Running Club was there January 1st when we rang the bells. You had a pretty good-sized group of people there this year. About 30 people. And they are there supporting many of the races, many of the organized events, and the marathon they work with. A lot of the same faces, a lot of the same volunteers, and we're very appreciative. It's been a good partnership. I won't be running anytime soon. Maybe after I get this next new hip, I'll be in consideration, but that's after sometime in the future. But we appreciate this, and we're very pleased to be in partnership and to be working towards these important goals. So thank you very much. Thanks. Johnny, now are we going to fight over what building this goes on? Thank you, everyone. This time we go into the regular portion of the minute meeting, and the first thing I ask for is a motion to approve the city council minutes from the meeting on December 19, 2019. Motion by Alderman Wingington, second by Alderman Dittelman. Do I hear any corrections or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go to claims, payroll, and disbursements. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of $1,465,410.95, and the payroll in the amount of $849,464.97. Do I hear motion? Alderman Hazel, second by Ferguson. Do I hear any discussion on these two amounts to be paid? Hearing none, roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wingington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries. Reports, I'd ask for a motion to receive and file the treasurer's report in November 2019 and the statement of cash and investment report of November 2019. Alderman Steele, second by Alderman Schaefer. Do I hear any discussion on either of these reports? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving and filing for audit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go to reports. Alderman Dittelman, Master Sewer?
On behalf of the Master Sewers Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve a deed of easement and right-of-way for sanitary sewer system agreement between the city of Belleville and Bi-State Development Agency.
Motion by Alderman Dittelman, second by Alderman Elmore. Do I hear any discussion on this motion coming from Master Sewer? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wingington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Anthony, would you want to make the next two motions together?
I will, Mayor. I don't have any objections. On behalf of the Police Department Commission, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of professional police officer Andrew Dobstrough, effective Tuesday, January 7, 2020, at 12:01 a.m. And 11:02, motion to approve the hiring of professional police officer Brandon Oden. This is a lateral hire. I don't know which department he's coming from, but it's a lateral hire, effective Tuesday, January 7, 2020, 12:01 a.m. So-
We have motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Randall. These two officers, if approved tonight, will be sworn in tomorrow. Any discussion on these two hires? Roll call.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wingington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications.
Can I read them all?
Read them together.
12A, Art on the Square, 515, 2020, 516, 2020, and 517, 2020. Request from Art on the Square to hold Art on the Square Friday, May 15, 2020, through Sunday, May 17, 2020. Street closure request, a public square and one block east-west, north and south. Thursday, May 14, 2020, 10 a.m., to Sunday, May 17, 2020, 11 p.m. City services requested, barricades, picnic tables, trash toters, no parking signage, electrical panels, and city staff. 12B, Memorial Day Parade, 525, 2020. Request from City of Belleville to hold the Belleville Memorial Day Parade Monday, May 25, 2020. Street closure request of North Third Street from A Street to Huff Park, 8:30 a.m. to 11 a.m. Parade route closure from North Third Street to West Maiden Street, east of Muscota Avenue to Walnut Hill Cemetery, 10 a.m. to 11 a.m. Additional city services requested, barricades, no parking signs, porta-potties, cleanup, police, and street department personnel. 12C, Keep Belleville Beautiful Citywide Litter Pickup, 418, 2020. Request from Basic Youth Board to hold the Keep Belleville Beautiful Citywide Litter Pickup Saturday, April 18, 2020, as a volunteer extension of Belleville Helping Belleville Day.
Do I hear motion to approve these communications? Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Dittelman. Do I hear any discussion on these requests? Yes, sir?
Just 12C, Mayor. I know Jennifer's pulling together that meeting on January 17th, the litter campaign for 2020. I've seen the agenda. It's shaping up pretty good. Into discussions, will there be any discussion with that meeting and the Basic Youth Board in any way, shape, or form? Because this is a pretty good deal that we're working on.
We're working on coordinating them. We're also recommending that there's more than one effort a year, because it's, you can't, you know, you can't just say you're going to control litter by having one weekend. We always try to do this shortly before Art on the Square, and we take all the help we can get throughout the city. So this will be about, you know, almost a month, 30 days before, but there's a lot of work, and there'll be a lot of follow-up from this initial. So, yeah, we'll be coordinating. Jennifer and I have met, and we've talked, and I think that there'll be coordination then and after then on future endeavors.
Yeah, because I think that coordination is what we've been talking about for a long time.
No, I agree.
It's going to really jumpstart a continuing litter campaign in the city.
We know that we've got to, we've got to get more people engaged, because the litter problem is ongoing. It doesn't go away. So it takes everyone. So you're 100% right. So we have a motion, we have a motion and a second to approve the communications that were just read by the clerk. If there's no further discussions, all in favor of these communications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's no petitions this evening. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3369 and 3370. And if there's no problem, we'll read them as a group? Okay, we have motion by Alderman Hazel. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Randall. Do I hear any discussion on the two resolutions? For reading them by title only and as a group. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
14A, Resolution 3369, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 for Art on the Square Thursday, May 14, 2020, through Sunday, May 17, 2020. 14B, Resolution 3370, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 for the Memorial Day Parade Monday, May 25, 2020.
Do I hear motion to approve these resolutions? Alderman Ferguson, second by Duco, to approve Resolution 3369 and 3370. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wingington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion's carry. We have no ordinances this evening. Any unfinished business? Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, last month, one of the citizens asked about the payment of the federal form number-
It was an error. I was in the wrong, it was down, it's supposed to be out of TIF 8. It was just a-
Is that thing corrected?
Yeah.
Yeah, as I said at the meeting, it was corrected the next day.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, taken care of immediately. At this time, we go to, yes, sir?
I would like to bring up a new business. I would like for the agenda to bring you on in the housing, as to when we're going to receive the grant money to tear down and demolish the home. East St. Louis will get one half, $500,000, in the month of January. So I think it's extremely important, and I'll tell you why. I had an individual at 9623 this month, when I came back off of vacation, that took the hinges off of a door. When you need a door that bad, and nobody sees it, shame on you, because they don't use a flashlight to take the door off at night. So I would like to know when we're going to get our portion of the money, if East St. Louis is going to. I'd like to have that on the agenda for-
I don't know how they, they must have, I don't know how they got this all. I don't know anything about East St. Louis. I know we're working on the list. We're getting, some of them are working on abatement. We're getting the abatement on the, by the asbestos abatement, et cetera, so that we can get the list prepared. We have to have all of our ducks in a row before we apply for the money. And I can tell you that our staff has had several meetings, and we'll be continuing to pursue this aggressively the next few days and weeks. But we're not, we're not letting any grass grow under our feet, Rafi.
All right, I just wanted to bring that to you in time.
No, I mean, they're very diligent in getting this done and putting this list together. So-
And we should be able to inform the report on the models that were submitted on the vacant housing lot. It's now been since October 11, 2018, we have not received what the alderman turned in, and the models are basically, shouldn't have gone ahead and be worked up, so we can eliminate a number of rental properties that are vacant. This has become a very big problem in my ward, because if I don't go by there on a weekly basis, at least four or five times, these houses will become broken into. And it's a dangerous situation. In that case point, 9623, when we boarded it up, it saved some children, as well as squatters, the opportunity to go ahead and go in there, and because the roof has a hole in it, if somebody were going on that second floor, they would have fallen straight through.
They're very dangerous. And we appreciate your call, and as you know, we came out immediately and took care of it. So we, all I can say is to all of you, if you see a- So we, we, all I can say is to all of you, if you see a vacant house that for some reason somebody did pry their way into, we need to be notified immediately, and we need to go, we will go right out there and secure it. We know that we have a number of them pending demolition, and it's unfortunate that people have walked away from so many properties, but we're doing everything we can to make them safe and to get them torn down, and there'll be abundance of them this year. So, and thanks to the Capitol Bill, we're gonna have an extra chunk of money to take down more than usual, so we're going to, we're gonna be aggressive this year, we will get a lot of them taken down. So, anything else on the new business or miscellaneous? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motor fuels, a, a motion to approve the motor fuel claim in the amount of ten thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Mary Steele, second by Chris Rothweiler, any discussion on the motor fuel claims, roll call.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco? Randall?
Motion carries, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd act, city council, I'd like to ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of approval of an agreement between the city of Belleville and Teamsters Petroleum and Allied Trades Local Number Fifty, clerical. Do I hear a motion for that purpose? Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Consilla, any discussion? I don't want anything else, we're going into executive session tonight, so if there's nothing else, we go into executive session based on that topic. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go into executive session for a short while, I think, and then we'll return for a possible motion on this contract, and we should be back with you. If you wouldn't mind stepping out, department heads, I would like certainly our HR director and our finance director, if any department... Okay, we are back in regular session, and this time I'm gonna ask if someone is willing to make a motion to approve the agreement, a three-year agreement, between the city of Belleville and Teamsters Petroleum and Allied Trades Local Number Fifty, clerical. Also, to note that in this agreement, there is a two percent increase for each of those three years, and I guess it's fair to say there's been other few minor changes as adjusted in the contract. Okay? We have a motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Hazel. Any discussion at this time further on this contract proposal? Hearing none, roll call.
Anthony?